Okay.
Yeah, okay, let's see.
And this is the one you don't have to like be specific about it pretty way back.
Okay, I think it's good.
Test. Testing. Test. Test two. Arbitrary test. Test. Pretty bird.
...
Test.
A stamp. Very official. All right, we're calling this to order. Six oh three, that'll be all. All right. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for December second, twenty twenty one is underway. Roll call. We have four of us here. Ryan, Ellen, Claire, myself, two absent. And we have a quorum, so that's good news. Minutes approval of the November fourth minutes. I was not here, but anybody have any comments or edits?
Nope. I believe we accept the minutes from the November fourth meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from November.
Hi.
Great. All right, we'll go on with the preamble. And it kind of explains zoning board of appeals charter. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor does it change voting. Zoning matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, assigned ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances to use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision is rendered here this evening. With that, we will proceed to case number one, CBA twenty one dash twenty seven. Catherine and Matt Lacy, homeowners at forty four ninety five Chardonnay Court, request a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight to allow a porch to encroach in the rear setback. Madeline, would you walk us through this, please?
Yes, definitely. Thank you. So again, this property is forty four ninety five Chardonnay Court. The applicant is requesting to add a roof over the existing patio pictured here on the left. It sits about fifteen feet from the rear property line. And on the right hand photo is, or excuse me, on the right hand side is a photo of the rear yard to give you an idea of the spacing between that. So the patio, as it exists right now, is legal, it exists legally. We allow encroachments into the rear setback for improvements that are on grade or anything less than thirty inches above grade. What prompts the request is adding a roof over the patio. Roofs are not allowed to encroach this extensively into a rear setback. And so that's why we're here tonight. Essentially, when it comes to this request, staff doesn't really recognize any unique lot shape, significant sloping topography, or stream buffers that restrict the buildable area. You know, the reason they can't do this is because of the setbacks. You know, the reason they can't do this is because of the setbacks. Essentially, there's a thirty foot setback in this zoning district on this property. And, you know, that's a comparable condition for other properties in the area. Their setbacks typically range from thirty to fifty feet. Some are even a little bit closer, more around twenty feet. I believe when this neighborhood was originally developed, when the house was built, which was a couple of decades ago, was developed technically with a twenty foot rear setback. But as you know, the zoning codes get updated over time. And so that's the issue that the property is coming up against here. But, you know, there's nothing unique, like I said, issue that's being faced here. And, you know, staff's perspective is it could potentially grant a special privilege to this property that other properties don't currently enjoy. And so overall, we don't see any harm necessarily in the proposal. But again, we don't see any special conditions that justify the request. So we do recommend denial of the variance. However, if you choose to approve it, we recommend just two conditions, essentially tying them to their site plan and then also the time limit. And that's all I have for you this evening. I'm available if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Would the applicant or applicants care to approach the board? Yeah, at the podium, please, and state your name for the record and address, please. I think you can. I think you can put it down so we can hear you.
Okay, all right, thanks. It might be easier to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Matt Lacy. My wife is Catherine Lacy. The home is titled in her name. We got married in twenty fourteen is when I moved in. I'm a chaplain for a hospice company. And we've lived there, Katie's lived there for twenty two years. Almost original homeowner, maybe two years outside of that. The property, what we're trying to do is basically get some more livable space in the heat of the summer. It just gets cooking hot. We did direct sunlight on those windows in the back when you see the picture. And so we'd like to add a covering to the existing porch. We're not trying to make it grandiose or anything extraordinary or get an existing privilege. But we're really trying to get over the hardship of the sun coming into the house. We chose to do the power company's program where from two to seven, you don't use your appliances. And one of those we try to limit is, of course, air conditioning because of the rate involved. And so what that does is makes a perfect storm of heat inside the house. We have added a pretty sizable, you know, fan inside the front room there, and it makes it a little bit more livable. But it can it can get close to eighty degrees in the house or higher sometimes, depending on the day during the summer. So what we're looking to do is try to make it a little bit more livable space outside. We are very interested in doing stuff with our neighbors. We have them over, especially on both sides of us often, and try to offer a hospitable space to them and to us. We'll put some fans on it, and we're going to make a substantial investment, which I think will improve not only our property value, but the other property values in the area. Putting an outdoor kitchen with hoods and I have those designs if you'd like to see them. I'm happy to pass this around if you'd like them.
Sure. See, I'm making the packet. So thanks for the site plan. We I'll let you continue in the last question minute.
Our desire was not to create, as the staff said, there is a special privilege. There are plenty of porches in the neighborhood that that looks similar to this. I don't know what they were all permitted or not, but we, you know, we like to follow the rules. And so we've we put the application in and it's substantial cost to do this. You know, even at this point, we've got the the cost of doing this application plus the cost of the architect is plus five thousand dollars. And the investment that we're going to put in is going to be maybe a six figure type investment because we want it to be really nice. And we wanted to add value, not just to our own home, but to our neighborhood. We we love our neighborhood. We love Dunbury. We walk or walk and or ride bikes all the time. It's it's a place we definitely enjoy being a part of and look forward to being a part of for many years to come. And that's why we wanted to make the investment to make it more enjoyable for us and for our neighbors as we share that space. Sure. Okay.
Okay, great. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this applicant? Anybody in opposition to this application? Someone, would you come to the podium, please? Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Just, yeah, you're good. Thank you. Just state your name and address, please.
Um, so my name is Marina Raff, and my husband, Hendrikus Winterholz. And we are both math professors. The Georgia State University have lived here for over twenty years.
What's your address? We just need your address.
Is right below forty six fifty five Chardonnay Court. So if you see, if you see on your letter, the letter invitation, you will, oh, I'm sorry.
So in in relation to the applicant's home.
Yes, so we later, so we are right below. You see, it covers our backyard's meat. Now, our backyard is below, our property is below with a steep slope like forty five degrees. And so the property of Matt and Katie Lacy covers a little bit neighbor on the left and on the right, like our backyard's fully covered by his backyard and right and left. And so it's there. So we if to say shortly that it started, it's going, it's ongoing in the appropriate drainage of from the roof, from the roof of their house, extended and originally thrown on our property in one pipe with a pressure and then extended to the right, to the right and into their perforated barrels or barrel or barrels underground, which is right above, right on our fence, at the fence still. So the original pipe caused both of those caused the original caused the huge sinkhole like about fifteen feet in diameter and three falling and dying. And there there one in perforated barrels caused additional huge sinkhole. You see the pictures of just yesterday and of a year ago with the huge three trees falling. Now, the second scene call of a year and a half ago is shared with our neighbor on the right. Roll Novitz forty six forty seven, I'm sorry, forty six forty nine Chardonnay Court. The scene call, he has about one third of one fourth of that whole simple. And his about five trees were were falling. One fell almost on his house. They were removed. Our was removed as well. You can see there it's like double stem, but it's one tree falling off yet last year. Then we removed it. And so what, so with all that going on, Matt Lacy, they for all this, yes, it's ongoing and they are not willing, not only to repair, but even to participate in the repairs. Like last year, we already wanted to share like three neighbors. Speaking of being nice to neighbors in the neighborhood down the street, there are three neighbors who shared and covered and shared the cost of this single similar single recovery. Now, there there are burial pits which are true in the subdivision. And on where our yards meet, there are burial pits, but they go few properties to the right and to the left. And nowhere else that the burial pits form only underneath those inappropriate drainages. It's right below right now, the growing one, the huge drainage and stuff. That their their perforated barrels are still there, no matter how much and how long we are still asking to move the drainage. I we invited the engineers there. Sorry, the erosion control engineer, we have a report, you have the email there who worked a year and a half ago. And for four hours, he made the assessment and investigation. We were worried that the drainage goes on our foundation, that it may damage. They, the engineers, actually, everybody says that their property is in more danger because it may sink because it's above the sinkholes. And the drainage goes to the property of our neighbor, who got it to the street. He did a huge job getting it all to the public sewer. Now this drainage is still there, the sinkhole is growing. Met last year when we spent, we were kind of discussing and working towards it. I am sorry for the details. All these years was had very big health problems, including cancer and multiple major surgeries, including the year and a half ago. And despite that, I worked towards the first thing I did, not my children, not my repairs inside the house or my mom who just passed away, gray stone, and not the family stuff and not the physical therapy. I took care of this with three of neighbors. Raoul met and we were discussing for about months or two. I got multiple contractors, engineers, and so forth. There were all kinds of solutions suggested. The last one, the contractor that the three neighbors used and shared the cost at the end of the street who came and gave us an estimate. I paid for the estimate. Their neighbors were aware, they agreed to it. And then right after the estimate was received, there met, we heard no from him, no, not in participating in the sharing the cost, not in repairing, not in moving the drainage also not, but on and if we go, which is no other way to repair the sinkholes as through his property because like it's it's like this and I'm sorry, and the bar, right? So it goes like this and above, like here, the cost there, there. So they only can repair it because excavators going from above. They need to really dig and press it there. So Matt first said, I forgot, ten or fifteen thousand dollars we will need. Or afterwards, he said, five thousand, we need to pay him to repair the damage from the excavator. So he, so the thing is still there. And right now, what we hear that this repair, this construction, and you see the text message copy that Matt first came to our door saying that he will build and we are not afterwards, we will not be allowed to repair. We will not be able to repair our, that damage that he made from his drainage of the sinkholes and on through his yard after the construction start. And and so we were talking again, actually, today texting each other. All Matt can agree, I don't know for a cost or not, asked to go through his yard. And that's it. He still doesn't want to share. We are willing to share despite that it's his responsibility. Now, another argument is very pits, like I said, the engineer proved it that it's only happened. Of course, it was a weak place because it's a very pit of debris of the original contractor, you know, who built it in ninety five, ninety six was the subdivision bill. Right back then, I don't know was allowed or not. But when we moved in, we had home inspection, we have all the documents. When Matt would come and ask my husband to pull the weeds, we don't see them because there was indeed, there was a green barrier of huge trees of twenty years old, you know. You can, yeah, on on our side. And what they, so we would, my husband would climb there and get the weeds off, and there was no buried pit until they came to us saying that the trees falling from their yard, we climb up, we see that pipe and you can see that pipe sticking out of the fence. And from it directly, the sinkhole and the roots were washed off, and that's why the tree is falling. And then that is how it's all started. And they actually stated that that pipe was installed a year prior. So before that, there was, of course, it's a weak place. But if you throw on this drainage with the pressure from the rainwater from the roof in one pipe, which would be a big pressure, or even now it's slower and deeper, it's deeper. So the huge area underneath is just washed out. So we just, and what about the green? You can also see, some pictures are taken just yesterday, some of last year. We can see through, and there is no green barrier anymore owing to this damages. And no green barrier, we can see through, we can hear them, we can, they can also see through. And so because the trees are dying and falling, there is no green barrier. Now we
Excuse me, I think time is up, I think. So, yes, we each side gets a certain amount of minutes to respond and
Just wanted to say that
Yes.
We would be okay, although it's, of course, too close. Like I said, we're here and we're too close to us and will be no privacy. We would be okay with their constructions if they repair the damage first because we also, our question is also where the drainage from the new roof will go. If this one is not taken, what's the further damage? So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, there's your picture as well. With the Lacy's can respond, you have a few minutes left as well left.
I first got to know Marina back in twenty thirteen when we asked to have her maintain the area behind our fence, which is overgrown and and looks pretty horrible. And she didn't want me to get in there and fix it myself. So she was filming me with a camera and didn't want me to maintain the area that she didn't maintain. And what 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 is back there is a buried pit. It's there's about six of them in our neighborhood. And everybody has basically had to repair them where it affected their yard. We had one in our yard previous to me living there. Katie fixed one on her own with the developer about two years after she moved in. It was on her property, it was her responsibility. That's how these buried pits have been getting fixed. And I have talked to Rule, the next door neighbor. And as recent as today, I didn't put it on the text chain with her because they get kind of, you know, wordy. And so what I just basically said is that if they want to bring in some dirt and you can fill it in that way, we don't want an excavator, a twelve foot wide excavator in our backyard, which could damage our foundation. And so I offered to Rowell to get a price if she's willing to. If she's willing to pay that price, then, then I think it should take care of it, we will just put dirt in it and it might have to put dirt in it later. But that's as best as we can do. We spent eighteen hundred dollars to work on this problem back in twenty thirteen to make sure no water, of our water, was being directed onto her property. But it is literally, you know, sometimes in a good rainstorm, there could be a foot thick of water at the back of our fence line. Our lot is twenty-one feet higher than hers. God's, God's in control of that. I don't have much to do with how much rain comes or when it comes. I'm sorry it has damaged your yard, but when I talked to Raul yesterday, he said he has water runoff from her yard coming into his yard. Because her lot's higher than his. And so that's kind of where we are with that.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Good, thank you. All right, we're gonna close the, to public comment and open up to board discussion.
Okay, I have a question for the Lacy's. What kind of a roof would be going on this covered porch?
We put that in there, it's to be asphalt.
And what type of drainage?
Well, our plan is, it's, our plan is to put turf on there and we're going to build a drainage system underneath it. And we're gonna take the drain pipe all the way to the culvert, which is in the back of Rule's lot, I've already talked to him. We're gonna take the drain all the way to his yard, so hopefully, once we fill in the dirt and take the drain, that's part of the reason why we're doing this work even in our backyard, is to get all this done and looking good. And we're gonna take all the water to the culvert, that's the plan.
Okay. I had a couple other questions. Are there other? Do you know how many other covered porches there are in your neighborhood?
Yeah, there's, there's about a hundred and sixty homes, I imagine there's more than thirty or forty at least. I mean, at minimum.
Okay, and you've, I, I know your, your intent is to provide some more usable space during the hot summer when it's very hot in your home. And I know that part of your goal is for the roof on the porch to protect the sun from not coming in the lower window, but you still got the upper window.
Just one though, it, it would, it would drop that. I don't know what the heat number is, but it would drop it significantly. Because we, we'd cover up six windows.
So you'd, you'd have the arched windows still at the top that where the sun would come in, but then underneath that.
Those would all be covered.
Okay, I, I know what it's like, we get that hot, direct afternoon sun in the back of our house, so I do understand that dilemma.
Show you if you want to see it in the picture.
And, and I've looked, but these. It looks like you'd be taking the windows out from here and putting French doors in.
Yeah.
So it means still glass. Okay. And then I had, okay, I think that's the only other question I had for you. I did have a question for staff, thank you, Mr. Lacy. Staff, the, you mentioned that roofs cannot encroach into the rear setback, even though it's okay that the patio does. What is the reason that roofs can't encroach in it?
So we allow patios and things, because those are on grade, essentially. Adding a roof, that's adding height, it's just more of an imposing feature on a home. Like I said, as compared to patios or low decks without railing. That's not something that is necessarily like visible or imposing from a neighbor's view, essentially.
So it is effectively an aesthetic.
I would say most, most.
I, I obviously, obviously, I know there's a whole separate issue about the drainage that's gonna come off of the roof, so I totally get that. But there. Okay, I think I've, you've helped me answer the question, thank you.
Setbacks for accessory structures, yeah, are typically more leaning towards the aesthetic side of things, so.
Okay, thank you.
But there are implications to your point with erosion and water management and everything else too. Any other questions, Board?
Madeline, do you mind putting up? The, in the packet, I was trying to put it up on my phone, I'd rather just everyone see it, so can you pull up the site pictures?
Yes.
Please. And I do want, while you're pulling that up, I just want to address, thank you very much, Ms. Noroff, I hope I said that correctly, Mr. and Mrs. Norff. And I appreciate you coming forward. I'm, I'm sure that the chair is gonna make it clear, but the, our purview is about just the zoning application. Which is about whether they can encroach into the rear setback, it doesn't have the, the neighborhood discussion and the neighbors discussing that you, you'll have to work through either the city to talk to them, but I'm just saying as a board, we are bound to only work on this application and I appreciate you bringing it forward. But I'm gonna ask you that, and so I just want to thank you for coming and maybe after the meeting, you and Mr. Lacy and maybe someone from the city, y'all can talk about if there's anything that the city can help y'all help discuss it. But unfortunately, this is, in my opinion, this, and I think that's correct, is not the place for it. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I, we understand completely, and we understand, yes.
Yeah, well.
Right, I understand, I understand, yeah. Right.
Right, okay, thank you.
Gotcha, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you, Madeline. So I, I guess I it's hard, so the patio, the porch is not gonna go over past where I guess the grill is, it's right, it's not gonna go to that little, the, the. It goes, does it go all the way across? So it goes past the butt out, so they're adding more, okay.
Yeah, I think it's runs the length of the house.
Right, that was that little, we had, we have a few on the docket tonight that added things, so I got them confused. Okay.
Oh, did you want to see the site?
Yes, thank you.
This sort of shaded area is where they're adding the roof.
Right.
And then there's a slight extension of just the hardscape.
I see, oh, so it's just hard to, yeah, so it won't be covered.
Shaded area where they're adding the roof already contains either poured concrete or stamped concrete, correct? Patio area?
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah. Okay, but not covered.
And there's no appreciable coverage issues on the lot, right? Board, any other questions?
No.
Yes, thank you, Claire for verifying that, we're, you know, we are tasked with the variances at hand. And currently, the, the staff has recommended denial. And so it's incumbent on the applicant to address and, and the opposition to purposely address the issue at hand, which is the encroachment, right, it's the setback itself. We do like to take into consideration things, comments from neighbors and, and so forth, but the germane to the situation is, is are we allowing this setback? It isn't our fifty neighborhood, so that's, that's why it's so hard for these, and we see them quite often to justify expanding beyond what is allowed in the, in the zoning, so. That's, that's the challenge here is, right, is why, why is this something that's, it's some great valid reasons, but that's, that's what we have to weigh. And, and only have to weigh, right, does it make sense to allow this encroachment into, into the rear yard setback? That's against city policy, city zoning, so.
I'm bored. Just for discussion, if the applicant chose not to do a roof and maybe did a lattice, look an open, an open structure above instead of a pitch roof, so that would, I wonder if that would be an option to allow to have sort of the livability, some shading, because it would allow. If that, and, but I will say, I live in a, I live in a house that has, it gets a lot of sun, I've got some.
Yeah.
Shames, so what I'm saying is if the applicant could come up with other solutions other than a roofed porch, you can, you know, you can, you can have more livability outside.
Right.
Without a roof, so I think that's kind of where the, we are stuck, is the roof, in my opinion.
Well, where I'm stuck is, you know, and with a lot of these cases is the hardship, right? So I, I heard Matt say earlier, you know, alluding to the hardship is the sun, you know, it's, that's a tough case, right? To say the sun is a hardship, so, I certainly understand making best use of space, they're trying to do that. But yeah, that's, the, the whole roofing thing is complex, that's all I can say.
I have another question for staff. Madeline, as Claire alluded, if there were another roofing type solution for this proposal. Would, what else violates the code or the ordinance regarding a roof cannot encroach? Are there restrictions regarding posts higher than a standard railing? Where, do you see what I'm saying?
So I would say it's in sort of into a gray area, but I would say anything that's adding like a covering and adding height over that, beyond sort of like railing for a deck. You know, things like that, anything that's sort of adding height, we would consider that to be covering it and thus an extension of the roof regardless of the material. But, you know, I would, you know, there might be other options, you know. Landscaping, you know, window coverings that help to mitigate the heat issues beyond just, you know, adding the roof. But that's not my place to discuss that.
I don't know what, I, I think they're called retractable roofs and I'm not awnings, how do those fit into the, the ordinance, the encroachment restrictions?
Yeah, I would treat an awnings same as a roof.
If it's, if it's retractable?
Yes, yes, I, I would say generally, if it's encroaching into the setback and it's something that's a permanent fixture, even if it's, you can technically move it. I, I would still have a technically zoning wise, I would not.
I think the difference is, right, a patio is a patio and when you start putting roofs and sides on, it becomes a structure, right?
Exactly.
That's, that's kind of the difference.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was, my question was gonna be, say, say that an applicant came before us with an open, an open patio. It's the same exact idea, same design, an open, they wanna put a summer kitchen, a chimney, all that good stuff, without a roof. So you would have denied, you would have, you would probably have suggested it was a denial.
If it's just a patio and there's no roof structure covering it.
Chimney, chimney sounds like.
I think there are allowances for outdoor kitchens in our code specifically.
Okay, so there's some, there's some leeway if the, if the homeowner wants to do outdoor living.
Right.
Minus a roof, minus a roof.
The roof structure.
Okay, thank you, just trying to, we like to help our homeowners understand why we come to decisions and maybe some options for them, should it be denied, thank you.
So I'm, an umbrella or multiple umbrellas, even though they add height, they are not considered permanent structure?
Correct, yeah, umbrellas, those types of like covered lawn furniture, that's exempt, that's not an actual structure.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Have a motion?
I move to deny the request for variance from section twenty-seven dash fifty-eight to allow encroachment into the rear setback for the following reasons as outlined by the city. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, it was on the screen and I would have read it out loud, sorry.
Do I have a second? First and a second. Motion on the floor for denial, all those in favor of denial? All four, unanimous denial. Moving on to the second case this evening, it's ZBA twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Bahid Yaganay, homeowner at forty-four fifty-five Village Springs Run. In Dunwoody, requested variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to allow a fence in the seventy-five foot stream buffer. Would the applicant like to? Oh, it's just, I'm sorry. It's been a long week already, yeah, yeah, thanks, Madeline.
Okay, so the next case is forty-four fifty-five Village Springs Run, they are requesting to construct a fence in the stream buffer. So this is the property, as you can see, the stream buffer encompasses the entire rear yard. So there's no way to add any fencing to the backyard without a variance. Essentially, the applicant is adding a small portion of a fence here to connect to some existing fencing that's already there. They are proposing black aluminum three rail fencing. Which would definitely allow for water to pass through in any cases of rate events. So there's no issues there, it would also require extremely minimal land disturbance. So we don't anticipate any adverse effects on the stream buffer. And additionally, you know, fences are standard improvement and sort of necessary often for use and enjoyment of a backyard. And so for that reason, we are recommending approval, subject to two conditions, again, essentially tying them to the site plan and requiring a time limit. And that's all I have on this case.
Great, thank you, now, the applicant care to address the board?
Live at forty-four fifty-five Village Springs Run, thanks for taking the time to listen. I don't really have a lot more to add, we have a big dog, small kids. She's pretty protective of them, so if someone catches us by surprise back there, because it's right now open to everyone, and we have had you know, not mal intention, but you know, kids in the neighborhood and whatnot, it's good to have a bit of a barrier, also that creek when it rains, it gets pretty violent. So if I'm at home and I don't notice someone or like a small child going down there, that could become dangerous as well. So really minimal, what we're trying to do, just enough to keep our dog in and other people at least encourage them to ring the doorbell when they, when they wanna pass to the back of, to the property. My next door neighbor, Fred Bounds, is actually here, he drove me here tonight, if you had questions for him, he's available, I actually just met my neighbor next to him. So she's also here, and of course, if you have any more questions about the details of the project, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, neighbors, do you want to speak at all or? Just here in support, okay.
I'll be brief, I support.
I'm sorry, you have to say your name and address for a break, for the record, that's fine.
My name is Fred Bounds, B O U N D S. I live at forty-four forty-nine Village Springs Run, right next door to Bahid, and I support his project, keep it simple. Questions?
I don't think so, thank you. Anybody in opposition to this project? If not, we will close it for board discussion. Board, questions?
Actually, I did have one question for the applicant, the sorry, the fence that you are putting up, I, I think staff clarified this, but you are essentially connecting to the fences that each of your neighbors has, correct?
That's correct, so we will be actually building any fence down to the creek or. That's correct. So we won't be actually building any fence down into the creek or fencing off the creek area. All that will remain as is. So the two open sides, sides of our house, we're just kind of closing those off using, uh, existing structures. So on one side to the neighbor's fence, on the other side will basically go right into a bush. Uh, and, and we're, you know, it's essentially gonna be right next to their fence as well, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? And now we can close it for, uh, board.
That's right. It's that whole, they built my house in the stream buffer.
Yeah.
This makes a lot of sense. All right. I have no questions. It seems straightforward to me.
Have a motion.
I move to approve the request for a variance from section sixteen seventy eight to allow the encroachment into the seventy five foot stream buffer to install a backyard fence, subject to the conditions presented by staff. One, the fence must be in substantial compliance with the site plan in appendix A. Two, the fence shall be constructed with hand tools only. And three, if the construction has not commenced with when, within one year of the granting of this variance, the approval shall be void.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Yep, second.
Okay, great. First and second, uh, in favor of the, uh, of the variance requests? Unanimous, it's passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Final case this evening is ZBA twenty one dash twenty nine. Julie Kellum, homeowner at twenty one ninety two Star Cross Court, Dunwoody, request a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy eight to allow a new deck to encroach into the fifty foot and seventy five foot stream buffers. Madeline, you want to help us with this one?
Definitely, so, um, this, uh, property twenty one ninety two, and I made a mistake on my PowerPoint. I have the wrong description there, but they are requesting to put a covered porch into their, um, uh, on their rear house, which does encroach in the stream buffer. This is a photo of the rear of the house. Um, they would be placing it in this sort of empty space that they have right now. Um, and then there's also an existing patio that's on grade there as well. This is the proposed project. Um, it is an elevated, um, covered deck. The only disturbance would be from the posts that they're digging for the footings. Um, and then it would also add additional impervious surface around two hundred and sixty six square feet. Um, on the right-hand side, I've got the site plan here and I've highlighted the stream buffer in blue on this plan, just so you can see it a little bit easier. Um, the structure would be approximately thirty seven feet from the central line of the creek and, um, uh, wouldn't negatively impact any of the existing, uh, trees or vegetation on the property. Overall, um, oops. Sorry. Uh, overall, we don't anticipate any, um, excessively negative impacts on the buffer. Um, especially if they were to do the mitigation as they've described. Um, the stream buffer does encompass their entire rear yard. Um, however, in situations like this, you know, this is one that was sort of, uh, again, more in that gray area where it's sort of difficult to analyze. You know, all of the properties on Star Cross Court along the creek, they're all very shallow. None of them have the ability to add additions to their property, so. Along Star Cross Court, this isn't a unique problem, but if you look at, you know, other parts of the neighborhood, there are properties that are more shallow, that again are really limited, but then there are some properties that are deeper. Um, that don't, uh, that aren't limited by their stream buffer. Um, so, you know, I don't see it as a particularly unique condition. Um, and I don't see a particularly um, strong hardship in this case, especially given the fact that they've already got impervious surface back there. Um, which, you know, they could add a roof over that because it's already impervious and they wouldn't require a variance because we don't care, uh, in the stream buffer if people want to build up on existing impervious, but we do care if people are expanding their existing impervious. And so, you know, stream buffers require, you know, proof of an extreme hardship, so it's a little step above even just a regular zoning variance. And so, you know, for that reason, we did recommend denial on this case. Um, however, if you do choose to approve it, we've, uh, recommended, uh, three conditions. Two are the standard conditions and then we have an additional condition in there regarding mitigation. Um, essentially just asking the applicant at the time of permitting to provide a mitigation plan. Um, that would be approved ultimately by, um, the community development director. Uh, essentially in their application, they, um, proposed three hundred square feet of mitigation for landscaping and plantings, and so we would hold them to that. But that's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Great, thank you. The applicant care to, uh, press podium?
Julie Kellum, twenty one ninety two Star Cross Court. Thank you for your time. Um, I did want to, uh, outline that it's a two hundred and sixty six square foot porch. I do have a three hundred and six square foot vegetation mitigation plan. So I am planning to put an extra forty square foot to offset the loss of the impervious space. The hardship, which is extreme for this particular property, if you look at the site plan and Madeline does make a good point about the porch that's existing there. The problem isn't if you look at the picture of the actual, uh, site, the lot is so shallow that if the porch is put on that porch with the existing concrete porch, I will have no place to barbecue or to be outside because the lot is so shallow and, and not wide. You can take a look at the survey. There are no other areas. Ninety percent of the home is in, within the seventy five, I mean, the actual house would never have been allowed to be built. Um, and my point with that being, it was built in sixty nine, these rules came out in seventy three or seventy four. This is an extreme hardship that of, of the house, but I bought it, not to be able to, to even be able to barbecue in my yard. I shouldn't, you know, I want to be able to have a porch like the other neighbors in Kingsley. There are over two hundred homes with porches. Now, within my cul-de-sac, there are only two, there's five homes. Two of the five have similar porches. I put a picture of one, uh, that's right there in the cul-de-sac. So I'm, what I'm asking is to be able to have the same type of thing as what my neighbors have. And I'm very keen on protecting the area. I'm a big naturalist, so I, I definitely, if you look at my survey, I'm not within the critical, what is it, tree root, the critical.
Yes.
Zone, because that was very important, uh, to make sure that I didn't damage those, uh, very large hardwoods. And, um, I'm putting guttering and, uh, vegetation and a place to catch the water so that the erosion into the stream doesn't occur. There's a lot of wildlife and birds. I'm a big birder, so protecting that backyard is very important. But that porch would allow, um, again, it, the, the main, the main piece that I think is the extreme hardship is the way the lot was originally laid out, because it is so narrow, there is no place for me to go. And I'm just hoping that the board would consider, um, allowing this porch. It's a very small porch. And again, I'm doing a lot of mitigation. I'm, I'm willing to do other things if you feel like there are other things that I need to do besides the, the rain barrels and the extra forty square feet of vegetation, I'm open to that. I just, I really enjoy the birds and if I had a porch, I could also be when it's raining, it would allow me to enjoy the home, um, you know, better. And, and I do have the benefit of it's, there's no neighbors behind me or in the ones on the side, nobody would actually see it. So it's not really impacting neighbors at all in any way. So it's really about, uh, understanding the hardship that the lot, which I guess when I bought, I just didn't realize that that would mean I wouldn't be able to have a porch ever, like other neighbors in the, in the neighborhood, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, the, the first I have to ask, is there's anybody else that wants to speak in favor? Or anybody wants to speak in opposition? Now we can ask our questions. Anybody have questions? I have one. So underneath the deck, uh, is there gonna be a, uh, concrete surface or what are you doing underneath the deck?
It's just dirt.
Okay.
Just regular.
Okay.
Ground, yeah.
Okay. Because that to me is, uh, it's, it's not impervious if you have a roof over dirt. I mean, it's just the way I look at it, right? It's if you was a large patio underneath it as well, that's increasing the impervious surface area of your lot, um, whereas, you know, a deck that's properly runoff and so forth, it's, it's a little different story. Um, and you're right, most of Dunwoody is built within a stream buffer. A lot of it is, right? Those are, mine isn't, but, but a lot of people are. If you back up a stream, you're, you're in it. So, um, yeah, I understand that. So thanks. Any other questions, guys?
I have a question, of course. Um, did you consider or would you consider? Since the existing concrete patio doesn't offer you much and you're proposing to build this nice covered deck, have you considered tearing up the concrete that's existing now and therefore, I guess we're. Yeah, to, to, to minimize, and, and the effort of doing that may be worse than the end result, but to lessen the amount of impervious surface in the back.
I, I have, the, the disadvantage is that that porch is the only place where I can go in the sun and sit out on my yard. If you look at my survey, there, there is no other land except for that small concrete patio. So that's where I have a grill and I have a table and I sit out with my daughter and my family. So if I lose that, I can't really go in my backyard, because the backyard, if you look at the surface, is that small. It's almost like a townhome backyard. So I want to be able to still go outside and sit in the backyard. And that patio is what I use all the time for grilling and sitting out. And then I wanted another area so that whenever it's raining and that type of thing, I can also do teleworking from, it'd be outside because I'm a big birder and I have all these bird feeders and, um, I, anyway, it would allow me to enjoy the backyard in a different way. But again, um, I would put it if I had room, but there's no other place, the land, the, the lot is just so narrow. And it's not wide, thirty six feet from, you know, from that, I mean, there's no other place to go. There's the concrete patio. And then there's another space where I could put a porch. And so I, I didn't want to give up the ability to grill a hamburger or have a Fourth of July party birthday outside in the backyard, because that's really the only place I have.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask to put the site plan back up. Do I need to wait or?
No, no, no.
Okay, Madeline, could you put that slide back up? So the brick wall that I see in the site.
It said dark black line, yeah, that goes around the patio.
Oh, that's around the patio.
Yeah, okay. It is, there's a, like, a little, I don't know, two, three foot, like, little.
Okay.
Like a knee wall.
Lot of the Kingsley have that, that go around the little concrete patio, yeah.
Um, and so just to be clear, I guess I'm really speaking to everyone, it, it, um, the condition about the, 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 the variance has nothing to do with um, lot coverage, right? It has nothing to do with impervious surfaces.
No, that's right.
So, yeah, I know, I know, we keep talking about it, but, but it's not part of it, so we need to.
That's right.
Make sure we don't factor that in. Um, but I do like what, um, I, well, I'll wait to talk about what board, um. So what about, so that should drive away. I'm just trying to get a visual of your, so, okay.
How high is that, uh, and would the structure be off the ground? The rendering looks like it's, you know, maybe three, four feet high, but then the pictures, the backyard, it's gonna be more of an elevation.
I mean, the port, the.
Yeah.
Yes, right. Right, but it drops off in that part. In this picture, it looks like it's like three or three feet off the ground, but it looks like you're, by the.
Yeah, it's, it's about, yeah, it's only less than three feet.
Okay, okay. The photos look like it dropped off a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, close the, uh, public comment portion and, uh, have a board discussion.
Um, interesting, I will say that we have a porch we can agree on a covered, but this is just for a covered porch and a stream buffer, but not.
Well.
Setback, which I understand, I'm just saying it out loud.
No, I, I agree, um.
But it is something to think about. I, but I do like what, I mean, let me finish this thought. I do like what Joe brought up, that, um, because the surface under it is dirt. And they're not adding, um, we're not adding another surface that then impedes the stream. They all do have the stream buffers in the water and there's a natural flow. And it, uh, again, we, uh, like that the homeowner has a mitigation plan, that we can certainly have them formalize it maybe a little more for the city, uh, but that there's a lot of thought was put into it, how do I build? Because there is the, the they were so, so constricted by where their house was built. And I do know that neighborhood, they're right, a lot of most, you know, you look across and your neighbor has a porch and you're like, well, I can't, because I I'm in the stream buffer or.
Yeah.
But they probably are too, so. It seems like they've done a good job of trying to fit what can, and I realize we're in the stream buffer world, so.
Yeah, I mean, the whole house is in the stream buffer, right? So, um, I used to live in Kingsley too, and Kingsley's an awesome neighborhood. I loved it in there, but the, to the applicant's point, some of the, some of the backyards are hard to reconfigure and stuff like that with, with just the power lines, there's one thing, right? The high tension wires and stream buffer. Um, I, I did have a question actually for Madeline. We're talking about decks and then coverings and then a covered deck and, you know, pervious service. I know we kind of go off, but really, again, we're still just focused on the stream buffer, so I want to make sure I'm not losing sight of the prize. Um, and it's really just the encroachment, I want to go back to that discussion that you were saying, Claire, about it's the encroachment into the stream buffer, not just the, it's the fifty and the seventy five, right?
It's, sorry, that was a typo on the agenda. It's, it's all just a seventy five.
So seventy five, fifty is the old, uh, DeKalb County.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, and, um, you know, and it's gonna be screened in, so with the cover on top, but clearly from the side profile there, you can see that there's no, there's just footers to keep it, obviously structurally. Yeah, I mean, it's tough. I don't know. What do you do? You know, you're making the best of what you do.
Yeah, that, like I said, it's kind of porous, so the rain could potentially come in from the sides and, and come through a little bit or whatever. I think, I think the distinction, if you're trying to draw to the earlier case, one is a, a setback issue, right? When you're actually.
Right.
Encroaching a lot, this is, uh.
Natural barrier.
Natural barrier that we see a lot, right?
Right.
Existing structure within the stream buffer, um, impedes them from any kind of, uh, anything, anything. Bravest them from doing anything, basically, because of that stream.
Right, and it's, it's a good point to, you can clearly see from the design too, that compared to the existing patio or poured concrete, whatever you want to call it, it's not like, it's still taking a similar blueprint to how that was done as well, right? It's not going out protruding further.
Right.
Which leads me to leave the applicant is doing the, to the best of their ability without taking more than what they need, you know? I just find that noteworthy.
I had a question for Madeline. The limitation that we can build up in an impervious, I mean, excuse me, uh, in the stream buffer, but we can't expand as, as far as the way the code is written now. In the stream buffer, the, the concern is the additional impervious surface or?
Uh, it's both about, um, expanding towards and proximity towards, um, the stream buffer. The rules were put in place to, um, maintain a natural vegetative buffer and to minimize the amount of impervious surface, because once you go over a certain amount of impervious surface in an area, it greatly increases, you know, runoff collectively. So our goal is to limit impervious surface and even though they don't have any concrete below it, because it's roofed, um, water can't necessarily trickle down into that dirt directly, so we do, it is technically considered impervious surface. Even if water can run under it, um, it can't like fall down and infiltrate into the ground the same way if it were bare. Um, but yeah, it's, it's both about, you know, feet of encroachment into the buffer and then also the amount of surface in the buffer.
And ultimately the impact that it has on the, on the.
And the impact on the stream itself, so.
So in your, and if you could just give me your professional opinion, then the report, the the recommendation initially, initial recommendation by the city for denial is largely based and rooted in what? The fact that there's an existing poured impervious surface that could be utilized.
From, from my perspective as staff, you know, I see an alternative there that is. From my perspective as staff, you know, I see an alternative there that is an option. And my opinion is just always go for the option that's there, that doesn't require variance. And then additionally, you know, looking at the size and shape of the lot, this is the one I struggled with because in this neighborhood, you do have lots that are very shallow. There's also some lots that are a lot deeper that don't have this issue. And so, you know, what's a unique condition?
Okay, so then I'm, so then I'm, so that I'm more clear, if she were, and I know, we know that the applicant doesn't want to do this, but if an applicant or in this scenario wanted to build on an existing patio in this case hypothetically, no variance, you would still need a, you wouldn't need a variance at all.
It wouldn't be going further into the buffer and it also wouldn't be increasing impervious.
And that could, and they could just build up as however much this code permits, granted that they get the appropriate permitting.
And, and building on that idea, if there was the option to expand the existing patio, obviously that will increase impervious surface, but maybe not as much as right now. Where I'm trying to go with this.
Increasing the patio would still trigger a variance request.
It would still trigger a variance request, but I'm having a hard time figuring out how I want to say this, so let me think for just a minute. I don't, I don't know that. I mean, I understand it would still trigger a variance request. I, I think I'm just trying to look at mitigating how much or limiting how much more impervious surface is introduced in the plan. We'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I have just, sorry, one more clarification question. So aside from the fact that it's obviously a deck and it has a structure on top, a roof structure, is this deck treated similarly to if you were to put a fence in since it's footing? All offense is is just footers, put posts in, right? I mean, footers is obviously supporting a structure, much greater weight from a physics perspective, but is it essentially kind of in its own class, aside from the roofs and saying, you know, you're just basically adding a similar type of structure because the fence is a structure that's, that's foundational, right?
A fence is really, it's fully vertical. This is, you know, not only vertical, but it's also horizontal and that's really the difference.
Yeah, I would argue in some cases, the fence would be, if it's a wooden fence, not the previous case was wrought iron or whatever, totally pervious. But in the case of a wood fence, I would argue that's probably much more detrimental to a stream buffer than a open air deck. Just talking about what's, what's harmful, what's not, right?
I'm going to talk to the board now. If we tied, because I can't remember what's in there, I can't remember all the, I don't see any on the plans. The, the applicant, maybe I can't remember if she talked about tying in underwater and drainage that's tied in. So it takes away that, you know, the runoff that we worry about in the stream buffer. And we've had other cases where we tie that to the approval is that there is the mitigation is not just in the, putting the new plantings, but also mitigating the water. So they capture the water and then put it somewhere as opposed to just adding a roof that's going to make it faster runoff into the stream. So we could add that in if it was something I would lean to improve if we added that to the variant, to the approval. Therefore, we are being good stewards of the stream with allowing this lot that I think is the hardship is the lot structure. And so I think we, maybe we could find a common ground, but that was just me.
And I like that suggestion. What I'm struggling with right now is considering a request where the hardship is that the house is completely in the stream buffer here versus the first case where the house was, the, the house was in the setback. And trying to figure out, you know, in that case, we couldn't, we didn't want to, we weren't allowed to go to add height, what was the? And here we can add height, but we can't expand, but we just, we have two, two homes that are, have a very unfortunate situation on the lot.
And they happened to show up on the same night. They just happened to show up on the same night, so let's remember that. Yeah, you're exactly right, but they each have different, there's different code restrictions based on.
For a setback versus a stream buffer.
So we can't really.
Madeline, is this an ephemeral stream? It's just a rainwater stream, or is it say? There's a difference, right? There's a little bit of distinction if it's a
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Sure.
So, so Claire, you mentioned, I mean, because I, you know, as a homeowner myself that lives in the stream buffer is challenging. You know, the, the big question or really, it's challenging for a board to make recommendations on like drainage, like that's not my area, right, right? But, you know, ultimately, when we, when you do a structure like this and you're in a stream buffer, that water's got to go somewhere, right? It's going to follow the path of least resistance. That water is ultimately going, what is, I guess, what is the concern about taking drainage to the stream? Because that's what most homeowners would do naturally with or without a permit.
Well, the city has people that will work with them and do it correctly. Well, we have to do is put it the language that they have to work with the city to mitigate the, the water. I think that's how you would say it. I could be wrong. We used to have a stream water guy that would come.
So help me on the, the depth of from the, between the home and the end of the deck. What was the, what was this footage? I mean, the, the width, I guess.
Six feet and eight inches to this dimension right here.
No, no, I'm saying how big, how long, how big is the deck? It is?
It doesn't really say.
You know, from the house, from the house to the end of it towards the stream.
Is it six feet out?
So what dimension are you looking for? I can pull up the package.
I'm looking for the dimensions of the, of the porch itself.
So how deep is it? How deep is the porch? I thought the applicant might remember.
It looks like the same depth as the existing concrete patio.
So six, eight feet maybe? I don't know, what is it?
I believe it's twelve feet, but let me confirm.
So the question is, is, is there a different impact in a gutter rain trough from twelve feet or not? I mean, basically, it's going to be coming down a gutter from the house or it's going to be, or it's going to be coming down twelve feet further. Is how much difference is that going to be? No, it sounds negligible to me.
It's fourteen feet deep and nineteen feet wide.
Okay, so unless water is really moving fourteen feet. That's, that's kind of my contention there. Thoughts, motions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Let's see if I'm on my page here. All right. I moved to approve the request for variance from Section sixteen seventy-eight to allow the encroachment into the seventy-five-foot stream buffer to construct a covered porch, subject to conditions presented by staff and with the following additions or modifications as discussed by the board. I guess. Did I read? And, and that modification, I guess essentially would be like we discussed with working with the city on any potential rainwater or drainage concerns or anything like that, and a mitigation plan, of course. Details around that. This is for ZB A twenty-one dash twenty-nine.
That one captured that. Do we have a second?
I second.
First and a second to approve, all those in favor? It's unanimous all four. Congratulations, your variance is approved. Enjoy your deck.
Oh, no, Ellen did. Thank you. Yeah, this is Madeline talking.
Great. Any other business, Madeline, we need to discuss? Okay, great. Other comment? Good. Board comment?
I do have one question because it used to be, not going to be wrong, our terms ended calendar year.
Oh, gosh.
Is that, or maybe it's, I don't know. So maybe we could just ask the staff to sort of look into our, when our terms expire. Well, I just think we should have it, it's, I'd rather know than guess. Thank you. Oh. We understand, we understand. No, 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 I just, it, sometimes it helps if you know. They're very small.
I didn't even know.
Okay, well, I'll look myself up. Thank you so much.
I, I can't speak to the two of you, but I know that Ryan and I are on through the end of twenty-three. We're, we're a class of December twenty-three.
Congratulations to us. You're about to become a junior.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Happy Hanukkah.